Good evening and welcome to the July Smyrna Town Council Meeting. I will call this meeting to order, and tonight our prayer is going to be done by Chaplain Jimmy Carver, and our pledge is going to be done by Chief Bill Cuperson. If you'll all stand with us, please.
Hello, Father. Almighty God, our Father, we come before you, and we are indeed grateful for the beauty of the day, and we pray your blessings to be upon all who play a part in this meeting tonight. We pray for our town, we pray for all of our employees, but especially those who serve us so needfully when we are facing difficulty. We pray your blessings to be upon our police officers, our firemen and fire ladies, our EMTs, all of those that we know at a moment's notice come to help us but face very dangerous circumstances at times. We pray for our council, and we pray for this meeting tonight, that all parties that come before this council might do so civilly and with kindness, knowing that business interests have to be done, but we can do it in a way that we maintain our level of being good neighbors and good citizens. We pray for wisdom on behalf of all of the parties that are here tonight. We pray for our nation, we pray for all of our leaders, not just those here tonight, but from the White House all the way down to this house, and we pray your blessings be with all of them, that they might look to you for wisdom and for guidance. Father, we have a very special prayer tonight for the Bobby Wells family who passed recently, and we know that he had a tremendous amount of influence on many of the young people of this community in the past, and we pray your blessings to be upon his family, and we thank you for your wisdom, for your guidance, and most of all, for your love, and we ask it in the name of your son. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, Chaplain, thank you, Chief. Amber, if you'll do roll call. Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed. Here. We'll now move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes for the June 6, 2023, regular meeting and the June 22, 2023 work session and the special called meetings of the Town Council. Council, any additions or corrections that we need to make to this? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, correspondence and communications, anything tonight, Todd?
No, ma'am.
What about awards and recognition?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we'll move on to our consent agenda, and the consent agenda are items that are determined by the Town Manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing individual discussion, but a council member can choose to pull off any consent agenda item to vote on individually, but I always like to read the consent agenda so you all know exactly what we're voting on. So our first item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Rutherford County relative to the ambulance service. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with T-DOT for annual maintenance of state routes and town limits. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated to prepare construction drawings to include traffic calming elements along Front Street from College Street to Division Street. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Wayne's Pest Control to provide pest control services for town facilities. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the Robbins and Morton Group for the construction of Fire Hall Four. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Viola WTS Analytical Instruments Incorporated for a total organic carbon TOC analyzer for the water treatment plant. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a proposal for professional services from SEC Incorporated for the upgrade of the Mason Tucker Pump Station. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Dan Weaver Services relative to the water leak detection services. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute contracts with Boozer and Company, Randy Button and Associates, and Brenda Walsh for the appraisals and easement negotiations for the sewer rehab line A project. And the last one is item J, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Anderson Yards relative to the annual mowing for the codes department. Council, is there an item you would like to pull off and discuss individually?
Yes, ma'am, a couple.
Okay.
That I have some questions about.
Okay, so which ones?
C.
Okay.
E.
Okay.
G and I.
Okay, so other than C, E, G, and I, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now go back under the consent agenda and pick up item C, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with HDR Engineering to prepare construction drawings to include traffic calming elements along Front Street from College Street to Division Street.
Yes, ma'am. I know we talked about this at the workshop, but I had some questions after looking over the contract, so some of the, some of the length is, has already been surveyed, a portion of this has already been surveyed. How long ago was that surveyed, and how much will they have to, how much time and expense will it be to update what they've already done?
That was done, part of that was with Charles's project on the Washington Street Crossing project, and it goes down to, I'll say, Wright Street. So what they will do is they'll add the additional survey information while they're out there, while they're out there, they'll kind of double check to see what the existing survey showed to make sure nothing, or the original survey showed to make sure nothing's been changed in it, and then they'll just tie in their new survey with their existing survey. So, once we get this approved and sent out, I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is on survey, or sometimes they're backed up, I heard they're, someone backed up four to six weeks before they can start to go out there and get the survey.
Okay, and then there's a list of items that are in this contract for this survey? Were these things already done on that first 630 feet?
Which list are you talking about?
Under number one, under survey, there's like A through H of items that would be what the survey's going to include. So I'm asking for the previous piece that was on the 630 linear feet from Division Street to Wright Street, have they already done this for that portion already, and so they're just needing to do it for the second half of this?
Yes, I believe they would have done every one of these items before, just as a typical survey, these are typical survey components, so they would have done all of those things before on the previous survey, and then they'll be doing the same type of things on this part of the survey and adding to it.
Okay, and then, so the cost for the survey, it's just a lump sum amount?
Yeah.
It's 88,000, so that is just to cover the additional, the other 600 linear feet? Or it's that plus anything they need to update from the first time they did the survey?
The 88,000 covers the additional survey, and then it also includes all the design work to prepare construction plans, so.
Okay.
A portion of the 88,000 is like the survey, but then they'll be doing like full set of construction plans so that we can take that and then go out to bid on it.
Okay, that was my next question, is who, the performance of the work? So the, they're just preparing all the plans, we still have to have this bid to get someone to do the construction on it?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, do I have a motion to approve item C?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item E, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the Robbins and Morton Group for construction of Fire Hall Four.
Okay, my question with regard to that is, we had three bidders, but they were the only ones who actually submitted all of the proper paperwork, correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that that was the situation.
Yes, that's true.
Okay, all right.
And just so you know, they were told multiple times exactly how to present it.
Right.
I mean, how to, in multiple meetings, exactly what needed to be on the outside of the envelope and all, and they still didn't do it.
And this is the only company that actually?
That's the only one that followed directions.
In our pre-meeting, we had the TM Partners, we went over it, how to fill out the document, how to fill out the envelope numerous times, and this company is the lowest qualified bidder that we were able to qualify through those bids.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item G, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a proposal for professional services from SEC Incorporated for the upgrade of the Mason Tucker Pump Station.
Okay, hello. I got a little confused in reading the contract, because there's two actual companies, there's the SEC, but then there's SSR. Are they like sister companies, or?
SSR is a sub for SEC.
Okay.
It helps them work on the VFDs, the pumps, the SCADA stuff.
Okay.
They work, SEC is the primary and SSR is their sub.
Okay, and so the sub is going to be the one actually doing the work, the SSR?
Some of it, not all of it.
It's a combination of both?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I was not clear on, okay.
Yes, SEC will be the lead design engineer on the project.
Okay, and so the costs are based on, because their, their rates are a little bit different?
Yeah, if you look on page six, under professional services.
Yeah.
That is their cost, and that includes a construction and post-construction phase, so that includes construction inspection, which we have typically seen in the past separated, but it's included in this contract as well.
And you're comfortable with those costs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, I'm good then.
Do I have a motion to approve item G?
I move we approve item G.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item I, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute, execute contracts with Boozer and Company, Randy Button and Associates, and Brenda Walsh for the appraisals and easements negotiations for the sewer rehab line A project.
Okay, okay, it says that this is part of the American Rescue Plan grant, so is the grant covering their cost?
So, the appraised, the cost for these people, yes, for the actual appraisal, no. So, it's kind of weird, they'll pay for the appraiser, the review appraiser, and the...
I'm familiar with the process, but...
They won't pay for the actual cost of the easement.
Okay.
But this is the art project, it is the grant, 30% matching grant, and it complete, we're doing Basin A8 and A9 now, they're almost done, this will complete the entire Basin A sewer rehab.
And I know that's something that's coming up later, that we have some tracks, is this, how many tracks are included in this?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 28, most of them, matter of fact, 90% of them are construction easements.
Okay, all right, then I'm good with it, all right.
Do I have a motion to approve item I?
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, under old business, we have seven public hearings. Our first public hearing is consideration of an ordinance amending Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title II, Chapters 2, 4, 5, and 7, relative to board and committee terms and term limits. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this along with the next two public hearings that we'll be having after this, the council chose to have some uniformity with our boards and committees, with our, our terms and term limits. This, this particular one before you now, Title II, will affect Parks and Recreation Board, Project Assistance, Sister City Charity Assistance, including the Memorial Fund and the Sister City Fund, but it will make three-year terms with two term limits for a uniform with all of these boards.
Questions for Jeff about this? Seeing none, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion.
Move to approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our second public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance amending Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title VIII, Chapters 2 and 3, relative to the board and committee terms and term limits. Jeff?
Likewise, with Title VIII, dealing with alcoholic beverages, this will affect the beer board as well as the packaged liquor board, for those to be three-year terms with two term limits.
Questions for Jeff on this? This also is a public hearing, so we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll go to council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second?
Table second.
I'll let you fight that out, Amber. Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is public hearing and consideration of an ordinance amending Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title 14, Chapter 5, relative to board and committee terms and term limits. Jeff?
Yes, and last but not least, Title 14, Chapter 5, is for the Stormwater Advisory Committee, this would allow for that board to have three-year terms and two term limits.
Questions for Jeff on this one? Okay, then we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion.
Move we approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D is also a public hearing, it's a consideration of an ordinance amending the town's municipal code Title 12, Building and Utility Codes, Chapter 6, Residential Codes, Sections 12-602, 603, and 604. Jeff, are you doing this one?
Yes, Jason King, Assistant, he met with Jeremy, our new public building official, and when they were reviewing, there were some items in there, it's not really going to make any substantive changes, but just some of the references in the code under this section, so that it further clarifies what the building codes will be enforcing. So you'll see the update to the table there, and just further defines some of these insulation and fenestrations.
Showing what?
Fenestrations.
Oh, okay.
That was the word.
That was the word of the night?
Yes.
Got it.
Glass-like.
How you spell it?
Uh huh.
Fenestrations?
Can I use an instance?
Any questions for Jeff on the word or on his comments? Seeing none, then we'll go to the public to see if anyone's here to speak for or against the item, not the use of the word. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion.
Move to approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item E, which is also a public hearing tonight, a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 50, Partial 33.02, and part of Parshall 33.00 and 72.00. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a plan of services, which details the services the town will be providing, on effect today, the annexation, this is the next item on your agenda, the annexation zoning request. The town will be providing all services to these properties except for water, which will be provided by Consolidated Utility District. The Planning Commission did review this plan of services and did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? I think we had quite a bit of discussion on this, as well as our additional meeting that we had with Planning Commission, so anything anybody wants to add from those meetings? Okay, seeing nothing, then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll go to council for a motion.
I'll move we approve this plan of services.
Have a motion to approve the plan of services? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Kevin, let me ask you kind of more of a procedural question, if we wanted to add into this about looking at the inner, the intersection that we've been talking about, is this where we need to do that?
I think that's probably more, would be more looked at with the annexation and the PRD zoning, I think. I think, because this is just our, we're going to start maintaining the streets upon annexation and that sort of thing, I think that would really be more appropriate with the zoning.
With the next one?
With the next one.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, any, wait, did I do the, yes, yes, okay, motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is a public hearing that goes along with this, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of PRD and R1 zoning of property located on Tax Map 50, Parshals 33.02, and part of Parshals 33.00 and 72.00, requested by Oliver Constable on behalf of two different property owners containing 47.83 acres, the properties located on Lee Road and Rocky Fork Road. Kevin?
Yes, these properties are located on Rocky Fork Road and Lee Road, southwest of the intersection of those two streets. Land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential in this area, surrounding zoning is a mix, is REM in Rutherford County. The town would be, as we just talked about, would be providing all services except for water, which will be provided by CUD. They have indicated there is adequate domestic flow in this area, but not fire flow. Staff did receive a facilities improvement determination letter from CUD, which does detail three options for the developer to consider to correct the fire flow deficiency. There are two existing houses, which would be annexed with this request, and both would be removed as a part of the development. As a part of this request, staff did recommend annexation of approximately 4,542 linear feet of the existing right of way of Lee Road, and approximately 1,405 linear feet of the existing right of way of Jordan Lane. This proposed PRD is for 88 lots on the 41.66 acres, with the remaining 6.17 acres to be zoned R1. The houses would be a minimum of 1,800 square feet of living area with a two-car garage. Materials would be a mix of brick, stone, and cement board siding. All requirements of the town with regards to open space, parking, and setbacks would be met. A portion of this property is located within the 100-year floodplain, so development would require compliance with Article 9 of the zoning ordinance. One access point is shown to Lee Road, over the stuff, street to the west, and then access to either the existing Rocky Fork Road or the new Rocky Fork Road McEwen Drive Connector route would also be a part of this development. The proposed, that proposed route, before that new road does cross this site, would be accommodated as a part of this project. In addition, the existing 20-foot prescribed right of way for Jordan Lane is within this project's limits, and the developers proposed that that road would be abandoned and eliminated with the development, except for an access easement granted to the two houses that are on adjacent tracks, which do utilize it for access. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this, with several conditions. The original recommendation of the Planning Commission was to require a traffic study. The council, in first reading, changed that to, in lieu of that, to add a left turn lane in lieu of that study. Number two, that the required minimum of fire flow is 1,000 GPM at 20 PSI. As CUD has indicated, that this fire flow cannot be met at this time, no class could be approved until a timeline for those improvements to correct this issue has been established. Three, development of this property will require hydrologic and hydraulic study to be submitted for review due to the proposed floodplain alterations, which would ultimately lead to a letter of map revision application to FEMA, and that a landscape buffer is required between lots 62 through 65 and the proposed Rocky Fork Road McEwen Drive Connector. Staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, seeing none, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. If you'll come forward, if you'll state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, good evening, my name is Richard Benedict. I live at 5069 Lee Road, which is the property directly south of Lee and north of the development there. I submitted some comments in writing for last month, I want to thank you, Ms. Mayor, and for some other council members that reached out to me with some questions. The, I guess I'll be very brief, but my request is that the council consider in the, in the permitting process to require the builder to put a eight-foot privacy fence along my border. I have, there's about 400 feet on my east border, and the south border of my property that will have about 16 houses there. Currently, there's a, used to be a horse pasture and then a hayfield there, and so having 16 families immediately looking into my property, it's an old farm, we have tools, equipment, things that could cause danger and harm to children, there could be youthful vandalism and mischief as people move into that area and move back and forth, so my request is simple, that you require that as part of the permit, and I'm certainly understanding if the builder, I guess let me back up, for myself and my family to put 400 feet of a fence back there is pretty cost prohibitive. However, new housing development divided among 16 or 18 houses seems like a merit, maybe a more fair way to put up a fence there. So my request is that you require that as part of the permit process, I'm not sure what that looks like, and also there's some fairly decent sized trees along the border that do provide some privacy, some are cedar, some are deciduous, so the leaves fall in the winter, but if they could leave those trees that are there as well, that would provide sound and visual barrier as well. So, I want to thank you for the time tonight, and appreciate Ms. Amber's help getting the information to you all, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If you could state your name, address, and who you're representing, please.
Good evening, Mayor Rob Mulch, and then SEC, on behalf of Oliver Constable. We are in agreeance with all the conditions that have been set forth on the property on this side in regards to those conditions on that side. We did receive Mr. Benedict's letter in regards to his request for the fence and preservation of the trees on that side. Mr. Constable is willing to preserve the trees, but is not willing to want to do the fence at this time, and it would be, as Mr. Benedict talked about, it is a considerable expense to put that fence up between our development and his, his property on that side, but we are amicable to make it certain that we maintain and preserve the existing tree row that's between our properties on that side, to at least in good faith, continue to have that preservation, that separation, visual separation between our property and his property on that side, so.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, I will go, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion or decision.
Discussion in with Kevin, Kevin, in the past, when we've had requests for, you know, privacy fences, it's been my experience that the fence itself is... my experience that the fence itself is subject to deterioration, and isn't anything as lasting as just that natural tree line. Is there any other type of landscape buffer that would maybe provide a more permanent screening than, than just a fence itself? Could something be added along that property line?
Could certainly add something our ordinance wouldn't require typically here, because it is single-family residential, abutting single-family residential from a zoning standpoint, so we wouldn't necessarily require any type of buffer. The existing resident, or, I'm sorry, existing tree line is there. Certainly, in the past, at times, we have, as when those existing tree lines are maintained, sometimes they will supplement, maybe where there's the gaps, or where you maybe, you mentioned some deciduous trees, and where you could add some, some evergreen-type trees within, maybe, or something like that, where there's gaps and where they would survive, you know, and that sort of thing, might be an option as well.
Okay. I just, again, I know in the past that we've had troubles with maintenance of fences, and eventually they deteriorate to the point they fall down, and we lose what we're trying to achieve here, and my preference is always, if we can do something that preserves the natural tree line, and if we could supplement it, then I think that's a more lasting approach.
I would like to see us do something. So Kevin, what's your recommendation? If we want to do something?
If we wanted, I mean, I think probably supplementing the landscaping area is the simplest and easiest thing to do. I mean, an eight-foot fence is even typically more maintenance than like a five- or six-foot fence would be. So, that would be, would be my recommendation.
Have we done this anywhere in this area before? Are we, are we inconsistent here, or no?
Trying to think. I don't know, and, I don't know, I can't think of in this area where we had anything like that. Typically, we've had, again, single-family, abutting single-families.
So with a natural tree line, according to the homeowner, there's a natural tree line that runs back through there that he'd like to see maintained. Can it be gap-filled in some way with a type B, A, B, C-type buffer?
Surely, that's something you could look at, yeah, a type A would be probably what would be the typical, something like this in this area, that was what, that's kind of what we used to, was all we used to require, and that's kind of the minimum. I think filling in the gaps, if there are gaps, with those type of evergreen trees or shrubs, whatever's appropriate.
I see a lot of buildings on his property, is there just one home?
Lou, yeah, Lou's just one home, I think there's some other accessory buildings.
Yeah.
For those that may not know what type A buffering is, can you?
It's basically an evergreen tree every twenty feet, and then you fill in with shrubs in between, at least three between spare trees, basically.
Counsel, any other questions or comments on this? I know that we did ask them to do the turning lane, but I would also like to see a traffic study done to look at the intersection that is, how far would you say it is, Kevin?
I think I measured it's about two thousand feet to the east there, the Lee Road and Rocky Fork Road intersection.
I would also like to see that.
I certainly don't mind that either, but my question would be here, we know Lee Road is expanding and growing a lot, that's why we're taking a look at turn lanes and so forth, but say, for example, a traffic study revealed that that intersection needs some work, and we know more growth is coming out that way, how would you suggest it's shared amongst development?
Well, that's, we would have to figure that out, by pranca, because we haven't done that before, because if it's, if it already needs improvements already, that the development's not necessarily causing the problem, if the problem's already there, and then you have the additional development that's going to make the problem increased, you know, how do you divide it up?
I guess my question, are we asking one-eighty lot developer to potentially fix that whole intersection on his own?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we would be looking at that. I think we know of other developments that are coming in that area, certainly.
And that's why I'm asking the question, is there a method or a mechanism to escrow or something to where everybody's pitching in to make these improvements?
Yeah, a piece of this is this one can't even move forward until CUD gets their fire flow up, so it's possible that another development.
They could sprinkle it.
Well, I'm just saying that another development could come along before this one.
That's right.
So if it's on this guy, but the other development comes first, then now you're kind of out of.
I think you would have to do some sort of design of what you're going to do, establish a cost, and then try to figure out a per-lot cost or something like that, based on that, you know, or linear, you know, the amount of development potential on a parcel or something like that, and kind of, when that parcel gets developed, there's a, some sort of assessment potential, I don't know if that's even something we can do, that's just, I'm just thinking off the top of my head.
I'm just wondering what the method or mechanism would be, that's all. We've identified this road as a road that needs improvement in our major thoroughfare plan, or, or actually, probably even outside of that, was that not included when we were looking at Spring Hill and a couple of the other roads that we identified that?
Yeah, it's, our focus right now is on Rocky Fork Conover Road, but down, that's kind of, is certainly something that's to be done in the future, yes.
I guess from my perspective, I'm trying to think longer term, I mean, are we at a point where, right now, we haven't engineered this at all, or have we?
We have not.
We know that, you know, if you, I mean, just kind of looking at this small snippet of land out here, we know there are other tracks around that and whatnot, are we at a point where we need to take the lead and engineer this from, you know, the start, and until it ties into Rocky Fork Road, and then figure out a plan as far as how the participation is, you know, is it a combination, or is it fully funded by the impact fees that will be collected here, or is it a combination of impact fees plus some type of assessment? Because I think there's, again, there's a lot of land here, and we know it's going to develop, and it's continued to develop. If we, I guess this is my concern, if we're doing a traffic study, and they're looking at it and they go, okay, the engineer goes, well, we've got ingress and ingress off of Lee, and we have it off of Rocky Fork, they may come back and say, this is sufficient for this, this particular, you know, eighty-eight homes here. But we know that when we're looking at everything else that we're talking about taking in, it's really not, and, you know, we do have some time in that, you know, we were, you know, the CUD issues and whatnot, so is this maybe more appropriate for us to look at as a town and engineer this road the way we anticipate it being developed out?
I mean, certainly, that's something, that's one way to approach it, certainly, I think, you know, I don't think there's anything in the current budget to do that, but obviously, that's something you all could amend the budget and add the project to the list, but now.
One of the questions that came up was impact fees itself, and actually, we're looking at studying those right now to increase those. And that said, and to Tim's point, is there, it's kind of what impact fees do, right? They help us improve roadways and sidewalks and parks and that kind of thing, so with that increase coming at some point, it appears right now we're at a hundred percent, am I right? We're collecting one hundred percent of what we can.
Correct.
Right? So, do we have, do we have some skin we've got to put in the game from impact fees as well? So, if we're asking for a traffic study, and it doesn't give us the results that we may hope it gives us, where are we then with that improvement of that intersection some distance away? And is that something impact fees can be applied to?
Certainly, that's something impact fees can be applied to, so that certainly would be, of course, anything, you know, any participation, that's something, if you have the assessment, and then you have impact fees, I mean, sometimes, you also have to deal with potentially, if a developer makes an improvement, you have to, there's an offset provision.
So there you go, that's where I was kind of going with it.
Yeah.
Is it in lieu of?
Certainly could be in lieu of.
But I think we all know, the impact fees in no way covers what the true impact is of what it's costing us for roads and parks and, and services, what the actual cost is. There's no way it covers.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with that. If we can get people to partner with us to do that, there's nothing wrong with that at all, right? I just think we need a number to get there. Well, that's where I'm going, it's like, is there an escrow fund of some, of some kind that can be built up to use those funds beyond the impact fees?
Or do we go down the path like Tim mentioned, where the town takes this on, we build it, and then there's a special assessment for a particular area for some period of time, or something like that?
So, we need to look at doing something like that, because we're, we're having to be too reactionary, and we need to try to get ahead of this, so I think we need to at least look at doing something like that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it's reasonable to have, you know, whoever happens to be the first development in the area foot the bill, right?
Or the last.
Or the last, right?
So Kevin, knowing kind of where council is wanting to get to, what is your recommendation for where we're at, at this point?
I think asking for a traffic study to at least see what this development's impact is on the intersection, I think that's appropriate, and I think beyond that, I think we have to, for tonight, I think that's all you can really look at and do. I think moving forward, we have to have a little more discussion of how we want to approach it, do you want the town to take on the project and have an additional assessment, if we can do that? Or, that's probably where you're headed, because having fourteen different developers all get together and do a project is probably not a feasible thing, I mean, I think you have to have the town's lead on something like that. And so, I think, at this point, I think really just asking for that traffic study to take a look at what this development's impact is going to be on that intersection, and then move forward, and then you know that much, so if there is an impact, you kind of know what that impact is from this development, and then we have to, this other issue, I think, is a bigger issue, we have to make some determinations on.
How does that position us specifically to this development? We move forward with this development approval tonight, where they can move forward with doing the traffic study, and then we come down the road six months later, and we have this assessment that we need to somehow now apply, how does that apply to something we've already approved?
I think you have to probably include that somehow in the motion, in the condition of the approval, if that's what you want to do with adding the traffic study back in, and then make that the condition of the approval.
And traffic studies are, they're third-party, I mean, they're not hired by anybody, so.
Right, yeah, they'll be a third-party.
They should give you a clear look.
Right, yeah, of course, whatever gets submitted, we evaluate it and look at it, and.
Plus, schools are about to start back, so traffic study-wise, it's probably.
You're about a month and a half or so from being able to count traffic, right?
It'd probably make good sense to, to wait for that traffic study to be done with schools not yet in session.
Right, yeah, it would have to wait a good, at least six weeks from now.
Jeff, legally, are we okay doing it that way?
Trying to understand what you're doing, I guess what I'm hearing.
If we're wanting them, if we're wanting this development to pay a portion of the upgrade of that intersection, once we figure out what that portion is going to be, can we put that in the form of the motion now, if the traffic study shows improvement needs to be done to that?
Typically, obviously, I know this may not be typically, but typically what we do is follow the recommendations of the traffic study. And so, we don't know what that's going to be, and that's always been a little of the problem the council has, is because it's something that's unforeseen, we were going by the experts that tell us that's how we get those turning lanes or other things like that. And so, I know that we're, we want them to look at this, but I think that the way that you need to word it is, follow the recommendations of the traffic study.
But what happens if you're not wanting them to have to do the entirety of the project, only their percentage of the portion that would be theirs based on all the other properties around it?
Well, the traffic study should lay that out as far, not the money amount, but it's going to say what their impact is, which is all they're going to be responsible for. And so, that would then be incumbent upon us to have a formula, a mathematical formula that identifies what that share is going to be. But I think, more importantly, that you're just wanting their, you're, we're asking for a traffic study, and we're asking you to, to implement those improvements, either by funding or by actually making the improvements. And so, granted, if it's a full intersection, they really can't make those full improvements, right? So I think I would put in your motion that either by funding or by making the improvements themselves.
This is all predicated upon the traffic study, though, saying.
Yeah, if it does, it may not say.
That this intersection is needed, if it comes back and says, and they're looking within the scope of this, that it's not needed.
That's right.
Then where are you?
Right, because it may say.
Then they, they don't have to do anything at that point.
Right, right.
But if it says it for that, it's going to say it for all the other ones, too, and then it's going to be on us. Don't you agree?
Not necessarily, no.
Yeah, I don't know if a traffic study is going.
So you don't think if, if this one develops, the traffic study would probably say the same thing?
It surprised me that it didn't get flagged for Greystone.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the big one, that's, that's the wide element in the room right there. That is a huge development, and that traffic study apparently didn't flag that intersection.
But if you add to it, does that not bring on the possibility of the?
Well, that's why the studies are done, I mean, that's their third-party studies, and so, from a planning perspective, that's where we always go, what does the traffic study? So initially, we didn't think or know that the traffic study at that time would even consider putting a turn lane in, and that's why we said in lieu of, we'd still like to get that turn lane. It's kind of grown legs since then a little bit, and we've just got to figure out, when do we mandate traffic studies? Or are we? Or can we? That matter from the other side of the aisle, the legal side of the aisle, I mean, they're, they're going to do a traffic study, can we change that traffic study, no matter what that traffic study says?
No, I think if we're going to say, follow the recommendations of the traffic study, then you're, you're kind of tied to that.
That's what we've always done, but this is a little, this is a little bit out of the box for us, I think, that's what we're trying to.
What if we follow what Jeff is saying in regards to asking for the traffic study, putting in there that we follow what the traffic study shows, and in the meantime, we have staff bring back to us for discussion at the next workshop, starting to look at, whether it's the town taking it on, and us figuring out a percentage, we just need the formula to move forward, because, I mean, not only for us to know, but anybody that wants to develop in this area needs to know that, too.
Well, as much for that as it is the citizens that live out there, safety, so.
Absolutely.
I think that's probably the safest way to do it, and kind of where I think planning is looking at doing it, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
It's a hot move.
Anybody want to take a stab at it?
Well, let me, let me ask the question again, because I think, according to what you just stated, we'd like to go ahead and move forward with what the traffic study gives us here, is that right? Are you approving it based on traffic study results?
And it, but keeping the turn lane in, keeping the turn lane in, keeping all recommendations that were already there.
Okay, and then have staff bring us some solutions going forward with how we can remedy this into our desires for traffic studies to look at.
That's not part of this motion, that part's.
I didn't make a motion.
No, I'm just saying, but that's not, wouldn't be part of this motion.
But, and not just with this project, but moving forward with how we look across the town.
Yeah, and to Kevin's suggestion there a minute ago, I think that was his suggestion, we typically follow the traffic studies, that's what we do, that's what Jeff said. So that's kind of where I think I'd feel better going, to follow the traffic study guidelines, and then have them bring us some formulas or solutions to look at as we grow out that way. Is that what I heard you say?
But I mean, not only just out there, but as we look anywhere, but I also want to include the buffer. But I also want to include the buffer as well.
Yeah. I think I got it.
You got it? Okay, go for it.
All right, I'm going to let you make your.
Motion for approval, including all of staff requirements, including the left turn lane, traffic study with the results being implemented either by funding or by construction, as well as a landscape buffer fill along the Benedict property lines.
Would that be an A-style buffer?
So one of the items in the recommendation was just a landscape buffer for slot 62 to 65 on the other side. So I went with the same thing because it doesn't specify which landscape buffer.
So whatever buffer that was.
Whatever they're requiring on the other side, they might as well do on this side.
Did y'all get that motion?
I did.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Okay, I have to ask, Mr. Benedict would like to say something else, but I have to suspend the rules to do that. Are you all?
I'm okay with that.
Okay? Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you guys for your conversation. I guess I'd be delighted with a six-foot fence instead of an eight-foot fence. Also, there's a PVC fence that has a longer maintenance period of that. And also, I think in, so just a quick math, the 400 feet that's on my property line, if you divide that by 16 houses, those homeowners would be paying for 25 feet of fence. I'd be willing to pay for that, or even 50 feet of the fence, if that would be a consideration that you guys would make. The other piece, I think the Montgomery Way, some of those developments to the east, which are kind of coming this way, I think they all have wooden privacy fences. I don't know if that's a requirement of the development or the permit, but I believe there are quite a few houses that have those. And finally, this is more about, I would trade off the landscaping for fencing very quickly. This is not about visual as much as it is folks trespassing in there. It's a rickety fence that's been there for years, and I'm afraid someone's going to get hurt. Obviously, there's theft involved there, but that would be just a consideration or some thoughts for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Anybody want to have discussion about Mr. Benedict's request?
I think the only comment I have is I'm not aware of any development in town where we've required a privacy fence, residential to residential. There are some that have it. It's there because the developer elected to put that up.
Or the homeowner.
Or the homeowners, right? We've already heard from the developer that they're not, they don't want to, they don't want to pay for that. We're also adding some additional requirements to the developer for the road study, the traffic impact, as well as an additional buffer. So although the vinyl fence would be nice, but that's probably more expensive than even the wooden fence. So I don't think we would be consistent by requiring it in this case, but.
Other discussion?
Will of the council.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Anything else? Steve, do you want to restate your motion?
No.
Okay.
Jeff, can you read what I said?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item G, which is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 23-22 relative to that annexation and PRD and R1 zoning of property located on tax map 50, parcels 33.02 and part of parcels 33.00 and 72.00. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're now to our last public hearing of the night, which is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28, part of parcels 113.00 and 113.01 to go from R3 to PRD. It's requested by Josh Hooper on behalf of Beacon Properties. The properties requested to be rezoned contain approximately 5.62 acres and are located south of Rock Springs Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, these are properties that are south of Rock Springs Road, near the intersection with Medical Park. The land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C4, R1, and R3. This proposed PRD is for 54 apartments on 5.62 acres for a density of 9.61 units per acre. The apartments will be restricted to age 62-plus. The proposed building would be three stories in height, up to 69,000 square feet in size. The materials would be a mix of brick, stone, and cement siding, and all requirements of the town with regard to open space and parking would be met. A portion of this property does lie within the 100-year floodplain and floodways, so development would require compliance with Article 9 of the zoning ordinance. This development would access Rock Springs Road at a new location for the public street, and it would also connect to an existing street at Addison Drive. The portions of both parcels not proposed to be rezoned would remain R1 and R3 and could be developed in that manner in the future. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval with a couple of conditions. One, that the fire department access drives and turnarounds are required to meet the requirements of the fire code, there were some concerns from the fire department as to how they're currently drawn, so we look at that if this is a pre-ruled site plan more closely. And then number two, no construction traffic would be allowed on Spring Hill Drive and Johnstown Drive for this project. The bridge, which they would have to build a bridge across the creek to access Rock Springs Road, that bridge and road would have to be constructed before construction can begin on the building. And the connection to Addison Drive would be required to be kept closed until completion of the construction of the apartment building, just to keep the construction traffic from coming through the existing residential neighborhood that's abutting this property. With that, staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, we saw in their plan book that they brought before, architectural review look. I just want to make real sure, I've told them this, I just want to make real sure what they're showing us is the product we'll receive. Do we do that at the future site plan, or how do we?
We would review it, the specific plans would come in with the site plan certainly, but the pattern book would cover.
They're getting a lot of good accolades for their product in the region here for senior living, recognized pretty highly for bringing a top product for a need in Smyrna. And I've had a little dialogue with them, so I think we've all talked about the need for senior housing here, what it looks like. I don't think our Smyrna Housing Authority at this point can even keep up. There's waiting lists for those that are three and four years long, if you can even get on them. So this is so close to the hospital and a good-looking product as it's been presented, so I think that's why, I think most of the council, maybe not all, I don't recall the vote, but sees favor of why we want to do something for our seniors here, for affordable living. Many of our seniors, many of our young people, many people in general just can't afford housing anymore. It's gotten ridiculous. So this is a way for our senior members to find some affordability here, and I think that's close to my heart, and that's something I'd like to see move forward.
I think it's a good product in between the two, in between what the housing authority is doing and then the other senior housing that we're having come in. And I definitely see a need, but I also agree, I want it to be a good-looking product.
Absolutely. I think we've pounded that home to them pretty well. I think they understand.
I think they want to be good partners.
Yeah. Hey, Kevin, I've not had anybody reach out to me. Have you had anybody reach out to you in the neighborhood?
Just today, actually this afternoon late, I did receive a call, and I don't know if they were going to try and be here tonight, so they may be here to speak. They didn't give any specific objections or concerns or anything like that. They just reached out and wanted to be sure what time the meeting started, and also said they may be reaching out via email. So I don't know if that happened or not. So that is the only phone I've heard from.
Did you have any discussion about the project itself?
Did, we did talk a little bit about the project, yes.
Okay.
Age-restricted.
Other questions or comments for Kevin? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item, if you'll come forward. If you'll state your name and address for the record, and then we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Okay, my name is Jada Jerkelen. I live at 522 Johnstown Drive in Hunters Point, and I actually live on the corner of Johnstown and Addison Drive.
Okay.
And my concern is not for the senior depart, you know, I'm a retired nurse, I see the need for that. But my concern is for the future development of the houses. I was told when I called in that it was approximately 30 feet from my backyard, and at the present time, we have a tree line there, but I was told that that will be gone. And I would like to have a reconsideration of something like that. Because I chose that house 17 years ago so I can look out from my deck and just see a row of trees. And I don't want to lose that, if at all possible.
Thank you, Ms. Jerkelen.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak for or against this item?
Good evening, Rob Mulchon, SEC, on behalf of Josh Hooper and Beacon. I think we're in concurrence with all the conditions that's been set forth on the project on that side. Mr. Atkins has made some good accolades about the property on that side. I don't think, you know, Mark and Tim have heard from Josh and his group in regards of what they're bringing to the community on that side, so I don't think the rest of the council really had that engaged conversation. So I think they have Josh come up for just a quick moment to kind of introduce himself, introduce the company, kind of explain what this product is that they're bringing to the marketplace here in Smyrna.
Great.
Thank you.
If you'll state your name, address, and the company you represent, please.
Great, Josh Hooper. I live at 1108 Milton Street in Louisville, and I'm with Beacon Properties. So absolutely, I can say a little bit about it. This is senior independent living. We are doing 54 apartments in an elevator building, and it is being offered at affordable rents. What I always like for people to know is that this is independent living. It's not assisted living, it's just not kind of our niche. Our niche is truly senior independent living, and it is something where we're targeting folks who have worked hard all their lives and they're paying these rents. They're not getting assistance on the rents, but we're just trying to keep them at more of an affordable level. So like, we're looking at an average of maybe 900, not maybe, an average of 900 on the one bedrooms and 1,100 on the two bedrooms. So to me, that sounds like a real rent, but when you really look at what it compares to in the market, it's definitely at a discount. We're, you know, as far as the product that we're offering, it will feel like a market-rate development. You know, we have, we're actually providing washers and dryers in every unit, we're providing above-range microwaves, dishwashers, we're providing a fitness room, we're actually partnering with Matter Health, which will provide services for the seniors. So if folks just need to schedule an appointment, they can just come right downstairs and get their shots or whatever. We are providing some site amenities, including a pergola and a gazebo, a deck that would look out onto the, kind of down towards the creek, and then raised garden beds is something that we've seen that our seniors really do like, as well as a building where you can keep tools and things for the seniors to use. You know, I even looked at this, and I think this is kind of neat, the percentage of seniors in Smyrna that would be able to afford to live here is much higher than you think. So I think this really is the type of product that would be, if you're a teacher who's retired, maybe even have some assets, maybe you've sold your home, but your income is not large, then you would qualify to live here. And so that's something that I think is really neat. And then really also to that piece about the housing, what we see is that, and we hear these stories, these are some of the most heartwarming stories we hear, where somebody says, I wanted, you know, husband passed away maybe, or wife passed away, looking to downsize into something smaller, but just can't find anything. And so that's exactly what we're trying to provide here in Smyrna. As far as about Beacon, just very briefly, we're long-term owner-operator, so we be your neighbors. This has got a 30-year affordability restriction. I think we even bumped it 15 years to 45. And we don't sell what we build, so you, Shannon's sitting right here, you'd be seeing him at all the construction meetings, Travis comes down a lot too. And so really all that to say that we're excited about the development and we're happy to answer any questions.
And every person living in the unit has to be 62-year-old?
Yeah, that's right. So with that restriction, the, even if you're a senior who's 62 and your wife or husband is 59, you would not qualify to live here.
Could you talk to us a little bit about the single-family component and what, how that would compare to the existing neighborhood?
Yes. So the property along the senior housing on Johnstown is currently zoned R3. The landowner that, so we have it, of course, under site control, but the landowner that technically owns it had planned to develop this and was hoping to increase the density of the single-family lots and go with, I think they were 50-foot-wide lots. And one of the things that we heard as we talked to both neighbors and the council is that it really makes sense to try to keep those lots at the same width as the existing lots and to provide a product of a similar quality. We were never thinking, and I don't think the current landowner was thinking, they would provide a lower-quality product, but certainly if you start squeezing your lots, you may wind up with that even if you didn't intend to. So this would allow us to provide similar quality, and it also ensures that there's, you know, you're not getting as many folks backing up to those backyards.
Other questions for Josh?
Josh, how much of that backs up to the new R3 there that's being proposed? How much of that is tree-lined and how much of that has to be removed? Can you tell?
Yeah, so, and I was actually curious to know the, I'm sorry, ma'am, I forget your name, but is your house on the west or the east of Addison?
My house is.
Like, on the left, or the right, as we're looking?
If you actually look at the map, mine is on the left.
Okay, yeah. That may have a little bit less of a tree buffer, I'm looking at a satellite image, but I do still think there's a fairly substantial tree buffer there. And Rob, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we would, I'd certainly plan to remove that unless.
Well, that's my question.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're along the back of each lot, it's not going to affect the building pad at all.
No, I think as we, based on her questions on this, I think from the standpoint of as we get into the design of these lots on that side, we'd be amicable to working to make certain that our grading does not disturb the tree line along those property lines because, one, as we develop these properties and we go to sell these properties, it'll make even more of a case for us to be able to sell them easier if there is an existing tree line behind there. So it's not only want to benefit for the existing homeowners that back up to it today, it'll be an existing, it'll be a benefit for those buyers who are buying into this, and it would also be much more of an easier selling point for those homes with that tree line behind there. So we would definitely would be.
Any vegetation like that that you could leave on-site, I think benefits everybody on both sides.
No.
The new side and the existing side, so.
So we would definitely be willing, if that would be a condition, you guys' approval on that side, we'd make sure that it's part of our design as we get in the engineering of those lots, so we make sure we do our job to make certain to maintain that tree route.
Ms. Jerkelen, does that help some?
It does, thank you.
Other questions for Rob or Josh? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Just for clarification, so the single-family residences, these lots are already lined the way that they're going to leave them? Is, am I getting that correct?
That's, they would be, remain zoned R3, so yeah, it would be that's, and it's the same zoning as was behind on the existing development.
Right.
So yes, they would have to be something very similar to that. They're not being platted right now, but they certainly would be limited because of the 10,000 script with lot size and the lot width requirements and lot depth requirements that R3 has.
Okay.
So that is, it would be something very, very similar to what's on there, yes.
Okay, and the property that's on the other side is not buildable? Is that the part that has, is part in the floodplain or am I getting it wrong?
That's not on the other side of that new roadway, yes, it's partially in the floodplain area, and so it would be more limited. It certainly would have that same single-family zoning, and so you may have some development there, but the lots would end up being larger and you would have to do some sort of cut-and-fill balance in the floodplain to be able to really develop those.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I don't know, Raquel, if you see those lines that go kind of across the road, there's two of them that are crossing where the bridge is, that's actually the flood. That's actually the floodplain lines.
Okay.
Then the one is the hundred-year and the other is the, one's like floodplain and one's floodway, I think.
Okay, right here, okay.
Okay.
Hence the bridge, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to new business. Under the planning commission report, we have a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map thirty-three D, Group A, partial sixteen point zero zero, from R2 to C2, requested by Nicole Vaughn. The property requested to be rezoned contains fifty-nine one-hundredths of an acre and is located at one-two-six-three-zero Old Nashville Highway. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. It's at the, on Old Nashville Highway at the intersection with Todd Lane. The land use plan for this area is the Old Nashville Highway or Old Nashville Corridor character area, which kind of would support a mix of neighborhood retail and services as well as townhomes and other multifamily development. Surrounding zoning is C2, R2, and PRD, which is Delacy Place, PRD. There is an existing house on this property. It does not meet current setback requirements along Todd Lane and Johnson Street. This is legally non-conforming. The house was there, it predates town, the town of Smyrna having zoning, so it is certainly a legally non-conforming situation. The applicant has indicated that the house would be removed as part of the development of the property, so any new buildings would meet setbacks. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Tim or Mark, anything we'd like to add?
Well, certainly, this Old Nashville Highway supports C2 development. It's consistent with existing C2. And as you get closer to the intersection with Enin Springs, I would anticipate that we'll concede, we'll continue to see the C2 development. Certainly, we're seeing it on the other side of Old Nashville Highway where, you know, we've cut across with Rocky Fork and Enin Springs as far as C2.
Correct. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item two, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map thirty-three, partial sixty point zero zero, to go from R1 to R3. It's requested by Michael Daniel. The property requested to be rezoned contains seven point five acres and is located at the end of Skinner Drive, west of Patience Drive.
Yeah, this is a piece of property, it's surrounded by, or land use plan was support a mix of medium or medium-density single-family residential development, and the surrounding zoning is R3. And then a couple of different PRDs, which is the Colony Green Tree, which is to the west, which is currently, has been approved for several years, but has never developed. And then Burnett Ridge, which is a more recently approved PRD to the south. This is at the end of Skinner Drive. That's, it is the only road that is connected to this property. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Mark or Tim, anything? Seeing nothing, then do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item three, under new business, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map fifty, partial fourteen point zero zero, to go from C2 to I2. It's requested by Rashish Shaw. The property requested to be rezoned contains nine point eight-eight acres and is located at Tridon Drive and Safari Drive. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a piece of property that's at the corner of Tridon and Safari Drives. There's, land use plan is, this area is a twenty-four gateway, which would support a mix of uses and services, kind of local and regional in scale, hospitality, retail, restaurant, and multifamily uses are particularly appropriate for this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and I2 in town and light industrial in Rutherford County. A portion of this property does lie within the floodway as well as under your floodplain, and it does border Stewart Creek. So development will be, will require compliance with R19 of the zoning ordinance. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval unanimously. Staff would also recommend approval. They did submit a concept plan, which is in your pocket and is on the, on the map shown on the screen there. That is purely conceptual in nature. It's not a PUD type of application, it's just an I2 application. But that is looking, that is something for the building that they're looking at doing. I will point out, the planning commission, we did talk about potentially flipping the parking, all the truck docks are on the side facing Lee Victory Parkway. We did talk about that as a potential thing that we could look at when the site plan, if this is approved, the site plan review, so that the truck docks would be facing Safari Drive, not Lee Victory Parkway. But again, this is, that is really just a concept plan at this point, we would look at that, the site plan review.
I heard you bring that up. I thought that was a great idea.
Well, it faces a major arterial for us, and if you look on your maps, the truck docks on the adjacent building would now back up to these on the same side. So rather than move all the truck docks to be visible, visibility from Tridon and Lee Victory, we thought it made more sense just to flip it and have all the truck docks facing one another.
And engineer, engineer is very capable.
Yeah, they sound like they'd be great.
Kevin, not directly related to this particular development, but that, that portion of Tridon Road there, I think they're working on a bridge right now, it's half-closed or whatever, but that kind of routes you out to the Amble Road interchange or intersection there. At some point, as this I2 area continues to develop, I think we're going to have to do something with that Tridon Road to be able to get traffic in and out of there. Specifically, like now, they had the bridge closed and you, you can't hardly get it out of there right now. So it's a two-lane road with virtually no shoulders and pretty tight, even though it's only, you know, a thousand feet or so. So at what point does traffic study impact that kind of thing figure in?
Well, of course, this development would require a traffic study most likely, any development on this property. We had a traffic study that was done by the, I can't remember the company name of the building, but on the end of Tridon there, the three large industrial buildings are getting under construction currently. I know that Charles take up, took all that into consideration when they were designing the Tridon Bridge improvements. And so I think the bridge, part of that, the bridge improvements will make it easier to make, for trucks to make the right turn and all of that, certainly. As far as, I mean, I think we just had to look at what, there's a, I think, there's one tract on the other side of Tridon, and I think that'll almost kind of develop that area out.
Looks like even on this map, something at the end of Safari there, which is technically in the county is developing.
That's in the county, there's a church under construction on that property.
That's a church?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's where River Alive Church is relocated to.
So this, this will be a warehouse, trucking-type thing?
It's a warehouse, it's, it's a, they're a company that is a, they have, they sell countertops and-
Flooring.
Flooring and things like that. And, and there, this will be kind of a warehouse primarily where they store and distribute from into the middle Tennessee area. The trucks will be coming in and then basically going out.
So no, no retail here, or is there retail?
They, they are going to have a small kind of a showroom-type deal.
They said more for contractor kind of showroom.
More for contractor, not necessarily directly to the public, no. It's more for contractors and that sort of thing, they would have what their products. But it, large, the largest part of this building is a, will be a ware, would be a warehouse that would then be-
Did they tell you about how many, I assume it's semi-trucks going in and out, is that correct?
Yes.
Any idea how much?
They didn't say, we don't have a traffic study yet, but I think there's twenty or so docks on the back of this building.
And I know in my previous life, we dealt in a lot of big trucks, and that kind of traffic, it just seemed to, at least in the areas where they were, it just seemed to, well, we had a lot of roads that had to be built and re- replaced, and it just, it turned into something not, not very nice as far as the way it looked. I don't know, this may be, maybe kept a lot, a lot better, but just a lot of truck traffic in and out, at least where I have seen in the past is, wasn't the best thing.
I don't think, I think it is, at least, because this is just an I2 zoning, so it could be, end up being something different. But, so, that's what they're looking at doing, it would be just for the one company, it would, it would not be, it's not as a warehouse distribution facility entirely, and that's all they're doing there. It's really more just for their, that company. Again, they're, they have facilities all over the country, and I think this is, they said they're establishing one for the middle Tennessee area, where they could have their products come to a central location and then distribute it out to contractors and job sites from there. So I think the, it wouldn't be as big of an impact as some, or similar type uses would be, similar type buildings might be. It's about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet, I think, is the size of the building they're looking at there.
But with all the development that's going back on behind that, we're going to see significant truck traffic going back through there.
Sure, sure. There's, with, with the three large buildings that are currently under construction at the back, will probably have a bigger impact than this would have, for sure.
Did you say something about a traffic study related to this?
They would, there, there's not been one yet, but no, it would be, but this is just an I2 zoning at this point. This is, like I said, this was a concept plan that they submitted just for, for information. There's nothing tying the development to that plan. But a traffic study would be required as a part of their site plan review if you will choose to approve it.
So we don't have to address that right now?
We do not have that now.
But you would in the site plan meeting about the traffic study?
Correct.
Other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We'll move on to item four, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of easements by negotiation or condemnation for the purposes of carrying out the basin's A and A3 sewer project.
Yes, this is the recommendation from planning commission. This is regarding the issue, or item that was on your consent agenda earlier with regards to the hiring of the appraisers and the, and everything. This would be, the town is, is preparing to repair and upsize the existing twenty-four-inch gravity sewer line along Hards Branch from Sam Davis Road to Highland Avenue. This will require the acquisition of thirty-seven permanent and thirty-seven temporary easements. I did attach the maps that show that area as well as the table, which detail the various properties where easements would be acquired. The planning commission did review this and found it consistent with the comprehensive plan of the town, and did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
We're going to move this to a thirty-six inch or a forty-eight inch?
I'll defer to Mr. Train.
I believe it'll be in section, part of it will be a thirty-six, and then some of it is going from twelve to eighteen. This, it completes the rest of the basin, so the line going, which is the trunk line to A that goes directly to the plant down Rock Springs.
Right.
That is going to be upsized. It's eighteen part of the way now, twenty-four, and that will be thirty-six and then twenty-four.
Gotcha.
Flipped.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is package liquor board report. There were no applications for the town to consider at this time, so we'll move on to item C, which is consideration of a resolution approving funding for nonprofit organizations for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Hey, Rex.
Hey, Mayor. Counsel, a resolution stating the agency purpose and amount must be approved before any funds can be distributed to nonprofit agencies according to guidelines established by the Comptroller of the Treasury and the State of Tennessee. We recommend you approve this resolution.
Questions on our nonprofits?
I did have one question on, I didn't recognize this one. The Transit Alliance of Middle Tennessee, what is that?
On the what?
Transit Alliance of Middle Tennessee.
That's a group that studies transportation in Middle Tennessee.
Okay.
It's a nonprofit.
And so do they just study, like, they give us a report or something every year or something?
I attended a class, several classes, Todd went through it, Brian's went through it.
It's almost like Leadership Rutherford. It's about transit and looking at transit in the whole region and trying to come up with ideas and ways to improve transit.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was related to, like, the buses or what it was.
No, it's not like RTA.
Okay.
Other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now move on to item D, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the fee schedule for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget for the adoption of a new maximum, maximum impact fee rate. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, we had discussed this at the workshop, and we did separate it out, because it really is two separate items. There's a amendment to the fee schedule is one thing, and then there's some amendments to the municipal code as well for sec, section five, title five, text, section five. So this first item is for just the budget, fee schedule amendment. These fees were originally adopted in December of nineteen ninety-nine. We've periodically studied these fees and updated the maximum rates. We did contract Duncan Associates to perform this study and the update. These rates are significantly higher in most cases, although the rates for warehousing did go down a bit. The increases are largely due to the increases in the cost of capital improvement since the last update. Warehousing is proposed to decrease largely due to revisions in the ITE trip generation manual, which show that there's, the number of trips actually generated by that type of use have gone down, largely due to the fact that the typical number of people working at these facilities have, have gone down. So that does lower the fee for roads of public safety for that type of use. Again, we did discuss at the workshop making this effective October first, and so I think that's certainly something that could be added to your motion, but staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Do we have a motion? With it taking effect October one?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item E, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the town's municipal code, Title V, Municipal Finance and Taxation, Section V, Impact Fees.
These are the, the ordinance amendments. These are relatively minor, and they're largely some cleanup amendments. There are a couple of things I do want to point out that are a little more significant. One would state specifically that structures used for parking are exempt from the fees as that use doesn't generate traffic any more than the parking lot does. And then the second one would just change the net cost per vehicle mile traveled to reflect the updated costs from the study. And so those comments, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin?
So the parking lot, if it's just a parking garage, there's no fees associated with it, but if it's connected to a building, it is?
If, if you had a building that were to be built that had a parking garage element, but they, the parking garage square footage would not pay the fee, but say they had a commercial business that was attached to it or something like that, they would pay a fee for that portion of it.
Okay.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything under other tonight?
No, ma'am.
Rexy Texy, status reports on sales tax.
Yes, ma'am. May state shared tax, we received seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. May local sales tax, we received one million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, three May local sales tax, we received $1,675,329. And I'm happy to report that sales tax are still coming in above budget.
H T's doing his job, isn't he? Okay. Questions for Rex on this? I know we laugh and joke about it each month about shopping local, but I can't tell you how much this council appreciates what our citizens do in trying to keep business here within the city limits of the town of Smyrna because it sure helps all of us.
Well, it keeps our property tax lower. We're an unusual community in that we, our top revenue is sales tax, not property tax.
I bet there's very few communities that that's the case. So, okay. Thanks, Rex. Director's department heads, any announcements from you all tonight? Amber?
No, ma'am.
I don't know if y'all noticed, Todd's in the chair tonight.
Todd's got to get out of here. He's got to go buy his wife a present.
Oh, I know. I saw this.
Yep.
Tonight's a special night.
Absolutely.
What's your announcement, Todd?
Happy birthday to my lovely wife. I'll lead off with that one, but yes, we did get a present.
Woo!
We've already given her the present, so thank you.
But we want to see proof. At the next meeting, you have to bring a picture of the gift.
I'm sure, I'm sure that there will be a picture sent here just in a minute.
Oh, good. Okay. Okay.
From that.
We just want to make sure.
I'd like to lead off tonight with our thoughts and prayers for Mike Moss, our director of parks. His wife Haley lost her stepfather, Les Clemmons. Interesting story is he would wake the kids up at night to take them to Krispy Kreme because the hot sign was on. It's a man after my own heart that would do that. So Mike, we keep you family. Our thoughts and prayers. We also have one of the community to join us on Friday, July 14th, at the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center for Middle Tennessee Electric Night at the SOAC. There will be a fiber splice demonstration provided by United Communications, which if you've never seen it, it's kind of interesting. They're splicing fibers that are about as thin as your hair, and it's interesting to watch how they do that. Plus, the most important part for me is Kona Ice will be there. Come out and join the fun.
Don't, please tell me that's not what you're giving Beverly for her birthday. Kona Ice and splicing of.
In addition to, right.
Kona Ice is very good. It is very, very good. I'll give her the birthday cake flavor. Mark your calendars for July 22nd. Paddle Adventures will be renting paddle craft at, at the water. Come out to Jefferson Springs for a chance to rent kayaks and canoes from the SOAC staff. The rates, rentals will be hourly. Again, the location is Jefferson Springs Rec area from 11 to 5. Walk-ups are welcome. It's for ages five and up. Anybody under the age of 18 must be accompanied by an adult. Any other information, you can contact our SOAC or email mikecraft@townofsmyrna.org. Next, one of the events that I like the most is the United Way Golf Scramble. The town is hosting the 11th Annual Smyrna Golf Scramble on Friday, August 11th, at the Smyrna Golf Course. Sponsorship packets are available now through July 14th. Jeff Craig? July 14th is, okay. Sign up today. You can't lose with this hole-in-one event. If you have more information, want more information, or you want to sponsor, you can contact Jeff at jeff.craig@townofsmyrna.org.
Mayor's already talked to Tim about some personal liability insurance.
It's like the airshow. When I get on the tee, they have to block off the box to reduce.
I can go on vacation.
Reduce the annual. So I have one slide that's a little out of place. It's a congratulations to Strickland Brothers, the 10-minute oil change on their grand opening and second location in Smyrna. And then I'll end with one that's very prevalent in our town today. It's love where you live. Nobody trashes Tennessee. And I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Hercules on this. When you have trash in your vehicle, there's plenty of receptacles, plenty of locations to dispose of that trash. Don't throw it out the window. Just this week, we contacted Chief Irvin. Somebody had decided to dump some trash bags on the side of the road and he sent his officers out there to do a little investigation, see if we can locate who threw the trash. But love where you live. That's all I have, Mayor.
Jeff, for you?
Nothing for me, ma'am.
Okay.
Condolences to Mike Moss and his wife. And I have one that does not, oh, I did have a slide.
It's working.
Okay. All right. So the Smyrna Police Department, the Smyrna Fire Department, and also not shown, the Smyrna Parks and Rec Department were recently honored with an appreciation award presented by myself to Smyrna Chief of Police Jason Irving, Smyrna Fire Chief Bill Colbertson, and Director Mike Moss on behalf of their department's contributions to the Juneteenth event. So again, thank you all for all you did to make that event a success. That's all I have today.
Mike, I'll add my condolences to your family. I know we've recently gone through a family loss as well, so I know what you guys are going through. I'll just take it for, for H G tonight. Shop local and be kind.
Jerry?
Mike as well. Sheriff, sorry for your loss. Just kind of want to let everybody know that our Sister City Committee will be sending a group to Japan, leaving this Saturday. There'll be four students and two chaperones, and they'll be going to Zama and representing our town. So we appreciate what they're doing and I know they're excited about going. They're actually meeting in there right now. And when this is over, I'm going to go meet with them. But I just wanted to let everybody know that they're, they're on their way to Japan. The, also, on Thursday, will be mine and Patty's 38th anniversary, so happy anniversary.
Are you going to get her a gift?
She's got me.
Like I said, are you going to get her a gift?
I'm going to take her to Applebee's.
Oh, okay. Good. Good.
You know she's probably watching, right?
I don't even know how to follow that. Mike, condolences. I think all of us, especially around our age, are starting to have more and more close family members we're having to help. And the loss of one is always tough, so condolences. I, I don't have anything other than I want to, in honor of H G, who couldn't be here tonight, be kind and shop local.
Condolences, Mike and Haley, about your loss, especially, I know that's Haley's side of the family. She's probably missing her dad pretty, pretty big, so. Some other people that passed away recently in our community, Margaret Utley. I don't know if any of you knew Margaret. I think I was 13 or 14 when I met her, and she was a pianist over at Stones River Baptist Church when I was a child. I grew up on the same street with her for a lot of years. After Connie and I got married, same thing. So Ms. Utley was 99 years old. 99 and passed away this week. Friend of mine, Tim Wilson. Tim's from Murfreesboro. He's a Realtor friend of mine and served as the president of our Board of Realtors for a period of time. And Tim was 63 and was pretty young and happened pretty quickly, so. Two condolences to Tim Wilson and his family. The prayer was said a while ago for Bobby Wells, and we want to continue to give our condolences there. On a good note, my little grandson Noah turned five years old this week, and we partied hard with him last Saturday. So I think we're going to party hard again this Saturday with him. He has double birthdays for some reason. And just thank you all for the July 4th celebration, all the teams that pitched in, Chief, Chief, all your guys, Parks, Rec, all the employees that pitched in to make that success during the storm. We had a storm. We had to lose some of our music and a few vendors and things like that, but pulled it off without a hitch. And it was great to get out there and celebrate our independence and our freedoms, so that's all I've got.
Great. Couple of items. You were speaking about our Independence Day celebration, and the rain didn't dampen that celebration. We were a little concerned about it. We were able to enjoy our food vendors, our music, fun and fireworks. I can't tell you how many hours our staff puts in to make that event possible, as well as volunteers and those that come to set up booths. So thanks to everybody who made it a great night. And I will have to say, other than a little bit of damp grass, it was the perfect night weather-wise. We were so lucky. And I have heard more than once that it was the best fireworks show yet, so it was good. Sign up for Smyrna Youth Football and Cheer. Registration is available through July the 22nd at smyrna youth football.org. So don't forget to sign up for that. The Top Gun Night Run is Friday, September the 15th. You can sign up and join us for this family-friendly event benefiting the Couste Memorial because city funds don't go to the upkeep of the memorial. That is all taken care of through our couste run, through our fun run. So I will tell you, it is very much family-friendly. If you're a serious runner, you'll enjoy it. But if you're not a serious runner, you'll also enjoy it as well. Just come out and have a good time. We've got a lot of new things this year that we're excited about. Join us on Thursday, July the 13th, from 4:00 to 6:30 at the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center to celebrate the 100th Home Lift, Home Uplift Milestone with Middle Tennessee Electric and the TVA Energy. There'll be free food and fun for the whole family. Mark your calendars for Saturday, August the 12th, for our annual Depot District Barbecue Festival. You can join us for food, live music and family fun. Ooh, Mike Moss, this is just for you. World Snake Day is approaching. Are you going to be handling that?
I will not be attending.
You and Daddy both can attend that. It's approaching, and we would love you to join us for the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center on Saturday, July the 15th, to celebrate. SOAC staff will be hosting this event from 11 to 1. Guests can join us for a chance to meet our snakes and learn more about them while also enjoying themed crafts and activities. The event is free with paid admission. All ages are welcome. We encourage you to register through Community Pass. So come out and enjoy that day. MTSU Athletics is hitting the road in July for their annual Blue Raider Blitz. The 2023 Summer Caravan will stop in Smyrna tomorrow at the Event Center from 11:30 to 1, where Blue Raider fans will have a chance to hear from head coach Rick Stockstill and other MTSU head coaches on their upcoming season and also learn about everything MTSU has going on in athletics. You will, if you sign up to go, you'll also get to have lunch at the Event Center, so there are still seats available. You'll also have the opportunity to win promotional prizes, including ticket packages, Blue Raider gear and much more. You can visit our Facebook page for the link to sign up for tomorrow from 11:30 to 1 to come out and hear about MTSU. We were pleased to attend the I-24 Smart Corridor System Launch in Rutherford County. Speakers there were Commissioner of Transportation Butch Ely, Senator Becky Massey, Representative Tim Rudd, myself, Mayor Shane McFarland, Laverne Mayor Jason Cole, and Brian and Todd and Tom Rose and quite a few of the crew were all out there. So if you've not noticed, the things on I-24 with the signs in regards to speed and letting you know whether there's a crash up ahead, also letting you know if you need to detour off of 24 onto some of the other routes to head you to Murfreesboro Road to then get back on. Those are what those are for. And it is not going to be something that is going to happen overnight. I mean, I keep seeing people posting on that wonderful Facebook that, why did we do this? So just know it is a small part of what T-Dot is looking at in regards to traffic congestion. We're thrilled to announce that Smyrna's been selected as the only city in Tennessee to receive Fortune Magazine's 50 Best Places to Live for Families in 2023. It is a huge honor that we are so excited about. I will tell you, this team at the town of Smyrna works really, really hard to give us all the best quality of life we can have here, and it is so nice to be recognized. And this is one of quite a few announcements that we'll be making in the upcoming months. But we feel very honored to be recognized and especially to be recognized as the only one in the state of Tennessee. So congratulations to our team for all of your hard work and also to our citizens. We appreciate each one of you and we hope you consider it the best place to live in the country. Another award, Tennessee, Smyrna receives the Municipal League Award of Excellence for Governance. As the community continues to experience rapid economic growth, leadership in the town of Smyrna continues to strive for efficient and effective government practices that enhance the quality of life, improve municipal service delivery and leverage economic assets. In recognition of these efforts made by Smyrna officials to continuously assess local needs and assess while working together with citizens to create positive solutions and outcomes, the Tennessee Municipal League was pleased to honor Smyrna with an award for excellence in governance. And our award will be presented on Tuesday, July the 25th at the conference. So kudos to staff and this team for what you do to make sure that our town runs efficiently. We appreciate that. I know we, as a council, work really hard to make sure that we are spending your money very efficiently and effectively. So I also want to say congratulations to Deborah Walker on her retirement. How long was she here, Mike?
27 years.
27 years. So hate to see Deborah go, but I am so glad that she is getting her time with retirement. So congratulations to Deborah. Counsel, is there anything else?
Good job tonight, Todd.
Yes. I did get proof, I did get confirmation unless it was just a stock photo of a gift and a gift bag. So I did get a gift bag, but I did not see the item that was inside the gift bag, so.
Wait till I get home.
Wait till you get home. Got it.
It's probably good.
Let's get a little personal now.
It could be. Okay. If nothing else, then we are adjourned.